Screen, okay, guys?
We're live, Terry.
We're live, Terry.
Live, Jim.
Call the meeting to order, sort of like compliance with the open records law?
Yes.
Roll call, please.
Councilmember Gillis.
Here.
Councilmember Hartong is absent. Councilmember Hooker.
Here.
Councilmember Raisler.
Here.
Councilmember Schneider.
Here.
Councilmember Schofield.
Here.
Just mention that Councilmember Hartong is joining us. And I didn't know, that is loud at your house. I didn't know. I know, it's right next to your house. Okay, next one, the pledge of allegiance. The pledge of allegiance.
To the light of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
So I would like to make a motion to adopt the agenda.
So move to second, please.
We have a motion in second to adopt the agenda. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say no. Adopted. Next, we have public comments. Anybody contact us?
No one.
No, I mean, I guess I'll just be clear, we have some people out there that want to make some comments, but I think they want to make it during, what, I guess, through choice me or if you want to make them discuss now or wait till the item that's on the agenda?
How far down is that? It's not going to take us too long. Won't take us too long. And stuff, any other stuff with the engineering and that? Okay, we'll just go into the thing. Got any scheduled concerns? I don't see any.
No.
Next, we'll move on to the consent agenda. The following matters may be acted upon by the city council utilizing a single vote. Individual items which any member wishes to address in greater detail, or as a separate item on the regular agenda, may be removed from the consent agenda upon the request of any council members. We have minutes from the special council meeting from November 18th, 2020. Bartender's license for Shannon M. Pride for Countryside Co-op. We'll get on that.
Any concerns on the license for Shannon Pride that we know of?
Stan has not yet.
Remember that one. It was no record, so we're good.
Oh, sorry, Stan. So I might make a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve the consent agenda. Second.
We have a motion in second to approve the consent agenda. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say no. Motion's carried. Next, move on to the business agenda. Mayor's report. Just a few things that I would like to mention. First of all, obviously, we have Mr. Brian Winnickens here for our meetings and covering them, but we also, I'd like to congratulate him, I'm sure on behalf of the council, for being named a broadcaster of the year.
Thank you.
And obviously, that's a national award, folks, and again, we'd like to congratulate you for that honor and, of course, all the things you do with the community. And in the community, and I'd like to mention during especially the winter sports season, of course, I was not allowed to the football games, or all the football games, because I was keeping stats. But being the fact I'm not allowed to attend the basketball games, I do enjoy watching YouTube and your commentary to watch, and again, I think that's a great public service. But again, congratulations on that award.
Thank you.
A couple of the things I'd like to talk about. I think I've mentioned some things along the way. You know, we were trying to get the whole cemetery thing figured out, which was far, as far as the property, which we're just about done with that. So it's been a long time coming, but again, all the property, everything certified, we, so on and so forth. The next two areas that I think that the city should look at. One is with the cemetery again, about going through and actually modernizing our records of all of the ownership of all the plots and get it computerized. I know that this, again, is an expense. But again, at some point, we have to, I think, get organized or to get into the century. And we have a lot of knowledge with some people. We got the old books, correct, with all of the things in. But also, there's a point, I think, that sometime next year, we should look at that. And the other thing is, when we had to talk about property, if you get down to where the Humane Society is located, south end of town, I guess, for the lack of it, of the south end of town, about the property down there, who all owns that, and we had talked about meeting possibly with Exile Energy, because they have the railroad tracks, the old railroad tracks there. And again, these are things that are not urgent, but I think there's things that we need to do. And again, we always need to be moving forward with things and making sure that we have things, that things are correct and up to date. And I think a couple of those things, I'd like the council to sort of think about those and seeing which one of those projects, sort of next year, we'll move forward as we get to the spring and we start talking about it. Also, staff to take a look at where some of those concerns are and I said, sort of those next projects to work through. And do that, so. Besides that, otherwise, I'd like to wish everybody a Merry Christmas. We won't be meeting again until after Christmas, so again, I'd like to wish everybody a Merry Christmas. We'll be meeting again on the 30th. Okay, any questions? Hearing none. Anything go off the consent agenda or move on to the administrator's report? Administrator Rasserson?
Just a couple of items. First and foremost, you both passed the budget basically at your last meeting, so that means tax bills are about ready to go out. In fact, we picked them up today or they were delivered to us today, ready to go out, so Jenny will be working on that this week. I did say that they'll be in the mail Friday. When all was said and done, basically, I think, as you look through the bill, you'll see the only negative number is going to be next to the City of Duran. Few other increases to the piece, and the one piece I completely overlooked, or actually, I didn't quite remember that, so you're going to see about a 90% increase from Chippewa Valley Technical School. Now, for most people, that's probably about a $20 thing, but they had a referendum, and so that was a significant increase on the bill. So as I look through, it's fair to say that the City of Duran resident and 100, it's about 86 cents per thousand that the tax bills are going up. So about $86 on someone owning a $100,000 home. Another piece that, you know, doesn't help the cause either is both the lottery credit and the first tax or the first dollar credit, both went down as well by about combined $33. So right off the bat, even though tax bills have stayed the same, there've been a $33 hit because those items went down from the state. So again, comes out to be about $120 for owner of a $100,000 home is going to see a tax bill increase of about $120, obviously about $10 a month. So nothing too drastic, but again, the city did what we could. And so we'll go from there. The tax bills will be in the mail. They will also have a flyer basically talking about that our lobby has closed and how you can make payments, and so we'll continue to work on that with people. We know we're going to have some people that are probably going to insist that they take cash, or they're going to, every year, we see, you know, folks that come in with their escrow checks that want, again, wanting, you know, bring those in and get the credits and, again, with the lobby being closed for both. I mean, it's not just us. Treasurer Patty Shaller with the county has done a good job with, you know, encouraging everyone to have drop boxes. Clearly, we have drop boxes here and we'll encourage the use of them. And we'll get those, basically, for those people that have property, or I should say, income tax, you know, pieces that they have to get to, maybe their tax preparers and things of that nature. We will get those receipts out to you ASAP, just like every other passenger.
So basically, we're asking anybody who really need to pay cash, because they want to directly give it to somebody, or somebody wants to make, just basically call City Hall and make an appointment. So we know what time they'll be here and we'll be able to set up and do a social distance situation with them and allow them to make the payment. But again, basically, instead of just showing up, please call and make an appointment so we know you're coming.
And we're fortunate that we have that inter-bestard deal. We can keep up, we can unlock the outside door. People can come, at least stay warm when, again, I think we anticipated the weather's going to get cold here at some point. And so it refers to having people stand outside, and so we'll serve the customer as best we can while still maintaining, you know, the social distancing and the protection.
How is the pet licensing going to take place?
You know, same thing. That's on there too, Matt. So same, and you know, that's another one, I hate to get too far, but you know, if there's some, if people can't get in and there's some delay there, you know, we're not going to get them too hard to the late P, I don't think, this year. So we'll make sure that that's known as well. We don't want anyone coming down and having to risk if they don't understand the process, so. So we'll help everyone as best we can. Just like we have in the utility payments, that has been working out great. Again, we had a number of people that still want to come in and take cash on those. Almost all those people have just gone to check and, or, you know, checked from the bank and things of that nature. It's worked out. We anticipate the tax pay as well and difficult as well. Mentioned, we talked, we were talking insurance at the finance meeting before this. You know, one piece, a couple of you have shared this with, but we did get a positive settlement with our insurance company EMC for the Patty Blunt claim. I recall that her restitution was at just over $29,000. Basically, what precipitated it or basically swayed the insurance company at the end was that there were some agreements made that her restitution payments that were finalized in early November. Basically, when that became clear that they could subrogate that, they informed us that they would pay the claim. So basically, we'll be getting $28,000, $29,000 minus the $1,000 deductible, about $28,000. So again, good news and thanks to all the hard work for a lot of different people in making that work, so. Again.
So what basically happens with that now is that that money, when we get it, will be reallocated to any of those funds where the money, since they were mainly donation funds where that came from. And then, at this point here, any restitution now goes to the insurance company.
Correct, yeah. So again, that's the other positive side. We don't have to handle any of it. It's just the insurance money comes in, goes to the library board, and they can reallocate it the way it was lost.
Scott.
Yes, Terry.
Hey, there, Bob. There's a $1,000 discrepancy there. She responsible to the city for that, or do we just eat that?
You know, she is still responsible for the restitution, so, you know, we would get that back at some point. So, yeah, so basically, you know, somewhere along the line, we'd see that.
Okay.
That, no, yeah.
Oh, anything else?
No, that's all I have. If anyone has questions.
Any questions for the city administrator? Hearing none. Discussion possible action regarding for the proposals for the 2021 property liability insurance. We just had a finance committee meeting. We had three companies that bid on that. I'll turn it over to the city administrator to sort of go mention the companies and then what the result of the meeting was.
Excuse me. So as you've already discussed in the past, so basically, about a little over a year ago at this time, we were going to pursue soliciting bids or quotes for our annual municipal liability insurance program. One from the standpoint, not that we were dissatisfied with EMC, the city's longtime provider, but just to see what else was out there. Annual league meeting, you know, the league makes a big push every year, and so we started talking to them. Forementioned issue with the librarian basically prevented us from going out last year, so we opted to do it this year. And so we basically received quotes from our existing company EMC, Committee Insurance Corporation through the Jerry Thompson Company in town here, and then also the League of Wisconsin Municipalities, who is basically represented by Spectrum out of Eau Claire. Basically, what the committee went through, ultimately, the quotes ranged from, this is over $87,000 for CIC, almost $91,000 for EMC, and $78,586 for the League of Wisconsin Municipalities. Both CIC and the League were here tonight to present to the finance committee, and ultimately, the finance committee recommended the league's bid of $78,586 for next year.
Plus the option.
Plus, yeah, I'm sorry. Plus, the option on the other piece we're looking at is they do have a no-fault water sewer damages for about $3,400. And in light of what Matt and I talked, and in light of what we saw here recently, so for example, the water main break that could have resulted, and again, we frankly dodged a bullet there. That could have resulted in a lot of, a lot of damage for the customer there. That would have been covered through that. So we're strongly looking at that, and we'll have a solid recommendation whether or not we want to do that before the final meeting of this year. But again, that is not currently offered by anyone, so, you know, the base rate of the $78,586 is essentially a good $12,000 less than what we thought we were going to be paying next.
What were they paying last year through the EMC?
Last year through EMC, the base rate was about $88,000, but as you heard, and I'm sure this for the rest of you who are meeting here, one of the downsides that I felt with EMC is they operate like, well, call it like a typical insurance company. If you get a new vehicle, your rates go up, right, during immediate, and that's what EMC was doing. So basically, we had the quoted rate of about $88 last year, but Matt's got a new truck, he's got a new ambulance, so we'll ultimately pay almost $95,000 for insurance this year. The plus is both CIC and the League, they deal with municipalities a little bit more. You know, the gripe from my side is, when I set a budget in November, I don't need to try to figure out what my insurance rates are going to be and come up with additional $6,000. So basically, they set a price, and then they'll adjust until the following, they cover your product, but they don't increase or decrease at all during the course of the year. So another positive for the League and CIC effort, same with that.
A number of things. First of all, I think it was great presentations by both of the folks who came in to explain what their products do. The other thing with the League too, there is a possibility of getting a little, a little bit of a dividend.
Right.
And that depends on all the people in the state that are involved in it and the total claims, and it's, they have usually every year, you might, that's, some years may not be huge, but you might see a percentage back. They, what was the latest one? 20% of the workman's comp. So if you had to look, if we got 20% back on our share for the workman's comp, our workman's comp is about $29,000 a year, so if we got back 20% of that, that'd be, you know, so there is an opportunity to, you know, there's a dividend for being part of that. And that's probably one of the things that I, when I heard that, that was like, well, not only are they the little bit, but there's also an opportunity.
And we've got dividends from EMC, and again, maybe they're working there apples to apples, but nothing to that level. And again, the League covers 400-plus municipalities in the state. I mean, it's their daily work.
The League, we're a member of the League, aren't we?
We are, yes.
And that is, we pay a fee to be a member of the League, or is that?
Basically, it's a membership fee. You're based on a population, yeah.
Is that, what is that number? Do you have it off the top of your head?
What the number is?
Yeah.
Let's see, is it about $600, Angie?
I think so, watching for a member.
I was just thinking, the benefit of the, there is a membership fee, so that's part of it, man.
It's a little hard to know when to come down via the phone here.
Go ahead.
So I hope I'm okay.
You're fine.
The company we're talking about leaving is the one that just paid our library claim, correct?
It is.
Is it taboo to do that?
You know, I.
Or is that the nature of the beast?
It is.
I think it's, I personally think it's the nature of the beast.
And Terry, as I explained at the committee level, I've got nothing against EMC. I did explain that, you know, the length that it took to get this resolved was frankly about the only issue I've ever had with them. Otherwise, again, talking to staff that have worked with them far longer than I have, they're responsible for claims. I have nothing bad to say about EMC. But the dollars are a big difference.
Yeah, dollars a dollar. You've been with EMC for quite a while?
Since.
Long time.
I remember I was.
Been here 18 years.
Nine, nine, yes. And again, it's been one of those things, this is something, and what was my, one of my feelings about this, this is something we haven't been out in a long time. And it was time, because obviously, we're spending the taxpayers' money here, we needed to get this again, because I think you got to do, I think you got to do that every so often.
No, obviously, yeah, you, I mean, I hear you should shop for insurance every year.
Yeah.
Or at least a minimum every two, but if we've been with them a long time, who obviously we've paid enough in premiums, I don't feel that bad about just taking the claim and then moving on, if that's what the numbers say.
Yeah. So basically, in the budget, what did you put in the budget this year?
Budget-wise, I had just over $80,000, so I mean, we're going to be fine there.
So even if we decide to go with the additional coverage on the no-fault water and sewer as an extra coverage, we're still within the budgeted number?
Basically, as Matt and I were just talking today, basically, what we're going to save for water and sewer is probably going to cover the split between the two utilities.
And then, you were saying about, what did we have budgeted last year for?
For all insurance?
No, for, no, for the liability, because you said that, because it was like $88 plus, we paid some extra.
Oh, I see, I see what you're saying.
What was the budgeted number?
Yeah, so the budgeted number last year was about $90. So basically, we were over budgeted by about $4,000 in total. Yeah, because, yeah, I remember when I explained last year was, I mean, we budgeted $90, you know, the last minute I came in and said, oh, you start putting our pencils and we're down a little lower. And again, that's great, accept. And we got, you know, a couple large purchases during the year, and then it bought us over. And again, me and I talked about that, and that's the way they do it, and, you know, this is the other way the insurance and the other companies do. Clearly, you make up for it. I mean, at the end of the day, the other company's going to make up for it, but not during the course of the year where we have to adjust our budgets to accordingly cover that, so.
And then, do we split this out by department as far as budgets?
We do, yeah. So, well, I mean, we do from the standpoint of the enterprise funds. So again, for an example, you know, Stan's not charged insurance in the police department, neither is fire department, those in general fund. But for the utilities, yes, we break out the best we can, and for ambulance as an enterprise fund.
That's perfect.
So that's worth, so basically, it's all the general fund, except whatever the utilities have. And we, they break out the other numbers enough that we can figure that out and try to extrapolate work from that.
Any more questions? Okay, so again, the committee, finance committee recommendation is that, and this would be effective January 1, 2021, that we now sign on with the Wisconsin League of Municipalities with Spectrum Insurance Company for our liability insurance. So that's the recommendation. What's the council say?
I'll make that motion.
With the no-fault water sewer?
With Scott and Matt looking at the no-fault water and sewer, possibly adding that to make the total $1,099.
On the max, sir. Second? We have a motion in second. Is there any more discussion? Hearing none. Being the fact this is a change, I'd like a roll call vote, please.
Councilmember Gillis.
Yes.
Councilmember Hartong.
Yes.
Councilmember Hooker.
Yes.
Councilmember Raisler.
Yes.
Councilmember Schneider.
Yes.
Councilmember Schofield.
Yes.
All six in favor.
Motion's agreed to. Next, move on. Discussion possible action regarding emergency business loan request from Chippewa Valley Computers and Graphics Workshop owner Carl Pappas.
Recall that when we started, or when the council approved the emergency loan request last July, when we first looked at it, recall, we had two businesses that were interested in it. One was the Tygons' upcoming business, the line in B slot, and Mr. Pappas with Chippewa Valley Computers and Graphics. As we talked about, we knew that the Tygons' loan was going to go in, and they ultimately went with the funding that they got through the Passad grant. I didn't hear what, I think Mr. Pappas at the time had not applied for any public assistance or any of the assistance that was out there. I found out later that he did, and he was awarded $2,500, but ultimately, that's what he got. So he contacted me again roughly about a month ago to see if the program was still available. I basically told him that it was, and basically, nobody had applied for it. So he asked if he could be considered again, so he's asking for the maximum of the $5,000 loan, and again, he'd be the only one, obviously, that we've considered. From the standpoint, his business has taken a hit for COVID, like we said. Talking to Herb earlier and Herb has talked to the gentleman as well, and clearly, he's had some tough months. He relayed that, well, I mean, that he'd be using it to basically pay off some of his business debts that haven't been covered through some lost income. Two other pieces that he relayed is that, again, he understands that basically, it's a five-year loan, and there's the provisions of the program that'll be interest-free for three years. He's committing to start paying off as soon as he can, and the business picks up, they go from there. And also, he is going to apply for some of the newer programs that are out there, and if he does get that, you know, this will get paid off first. So I think it certainly falls within the realm of what we created the program for, and it sounds like Mr. Pappas is, it would be a pretty low risk on this. Final piece, I will also be talking about him about, again, any sort of collateralization of, just in case, in a worst-case scenario, just to make sure that our interests are protected. But again, I would recommend making this one Mr. Pappas.
Again, this is something we've discussed before. Now he's officially asking for, you know, because we did get the application quite some time ago, but as we said. Any more questions concerning this application?
I was, I was in the fact that we do, we are protected at some point, right, if he devolves, we do get it back?
Well, it's a little, but I mean, it's somewhat of an unsecured loan, but again, I will be speaking with Mr. Pappas, and that was part of the provisions. That, you know, this is a little different than, you know, some of our other laws that we made, that we have, you know, a second on a building or things of that nature. But I will be discussing some sort of collateralization with Mr. Pappas, but I guess I would, I'd be remiss if I didn't say, Terry, that we're at risk with any loan we do. And there's no guarantees.
Just curious.
Yeah.
I just know he's a great small business owner that's been working hard, tried hard in downtown, and he's been a great neighbor to me, and.
Well, yeah, great neighbor for me. I mean, he's actually done some stuff for me.
He's an asset to our community, so I think we should definitely.
I would say that he seems to be the epitome of what we designed this program for.
Yes.
I'll make the motion then to approve the emergency business loan request for Pete Pappas.
We have a motion in second to approve the loan request, the emergency loan request. Is there any discussion? Comments or questions? Hearing none. All those in favor say aye.
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 Opposed, say no? Motion's agreed to. Next, we have discussion possible action regarding the vacant building appeals. Administrator Rasserson, would you like to go? We had a couple that we did. We also have one of the parties here to speak based on that action. I don't know if we just want to take that one first and then go through the rest of them? Is that how we just want to handle it?
I think that's the easiest way to do it.
So the one we have would be the former Scott Moles building loan by Dan McCallum. If you want to have the parties come in, you want to grab them? Hey, Dan. My standing where he gets your chair, I guess?
He can use that roller chair right there, Dan, no reason.
Okay, if you'd like to give a status of this appeal?
So a couple of things, I guess. So when we had the committee meeting on November 18th, Mr. Callum was there, presented his appeal. Ultimately, that appeal was denied on an oral vote. But recall, last year, when we went through this process, Mr. Callum was given a reprieve on a $1,000 fee in agreement that he would take care of some improvements to his building. He did bring those improvements. We have quotas in some receipts for some of those improvements at the meeting that night. You know, from the COVID standpoint, we didn't pass them around or anything. I think we had just a couple of people that saw them, so I think we've all had a chance to look at them just a little bit more. So, yeah, at this point, I guess it's, you know, in short, the recommendation from the committee was to deny the appeal, and I'll, I forget who the chair, Terry is the chair of that committee. And so I'll let you, if you want to add anything more to that, Terry.
From what I remember of that, it was just, just go with the plan. I mean, we need more than I'm going to do what I'm going to do. We need a plan. So I just, I'm wondering if that's what Scott brought to the table there?
Other folks, okay. And Terry, we have three, Dan and, the other two folks, introduce yourselves.
Terry, Frank Smooth from Eau Claire.
Susan Enstrom from Eau Claire. I'm the arts department. He's head of the Chippewa County Historical Society.
Okay, so just for the record, ever, got that, Clark? Those people? Okay, just saying. Have to do that, so. So basically, as we said, that the appeal at that point, the recommendation was to go, I would obviously like to give Dan. The one thing about it is, would like to keep this somewhat, you know, get to the facts here, for surely, we don't want to go on and on about, because I think we've heard a lot about the building already. But if you want to start, and then, and again, if we, you know, could keep this in, you know, about five to seven minutes, that would be great. Okay?
Frank, first of all, the.
Frank, first of all, the, 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 yeah.
Okay, the four jurors.
I heard about this project from, uh, Dan, who we all know, of course. Um, and I think it's a terrific project, and I'd just like to make a couple of points that won't take but a minute. I want to tell you just a little bit about my background, uh, first. And right now, I'm the museum developer for the Chippewa Area History Center, which is going up at the entrance of Irvine Park. Uh, and Chippewa Falls is a multi-million dollar project. And before that, we opened up a new wing at the Don Company Historical Society, uh, in Menominee. Uh, and before that, I opened up a new museum in Oregon, on the south coast of, uh, Oregon. And so, Dan was telling me about this project. I, I just think it's terrific. I think it offers, uh, four benefits, and I think with a little bit of consulting, why, we get a strategic plan, we get, um, uh, some progress on it. But the four benefits I want to talk just for a minute about are, a project like this is great for community partnership. A project like this will bring attention to downtown and to Duran. Now, a project like this takes time, and a project, uh, like this, you'll be glad that you supported in the end. Now, I've worked on quite a few of these projects. I worked for 15 years at the Chippewa Valley Museum in Eau Claire before I went on like Johnny Appleseed, opening up, uh, museums all across the country. And those are four things that I can report to the truth, every two. So, a, a building like this lends itself, I mean, it creates community partnerships. And so, when we opened up the new wing, uh, in Menominee, which is about a 6,000 square foot wing, we had, uh, not only is it useful for the museum, uh, but we had, uh, boys and girls come meet there, we had staff meet there, uh, we had that school district, have classes there. We had, uh, the Rotary and other groups, Light Rotary meet there. And we had, um, uh, the retirement group, multiple value learning and retirement, which is about a lot of everything. There's no other space in Menominee to have all of those places meet.
Frank, just real quick. This is, we're just, from the standpoint of not everyone in the room was at the committee meeting.
Sure.
Can maybe you explain quickly what the project is?
Oh, yeah, yeah.
Yeah.
Makes sense. Uh, Dan's, Dan's, uh, goal is to create, uh, annual flexible cross-cultural, cross-artists community center. Uh, that can be used by different groups, it can be used by musicians, it can be used by artists. Uh, and, uh, that's, that's just a terrific idea for Duran. That's a really great fit for Duran. Um, so, it will create this community partnership. Second, it brings attention. Every project that I've worked on has brought attention to the city, you know? Uh, I mean, some of them big time. The, the Kooz Bay project, the governor came to the opening. I'm, I'm here to tell you, the governor will allow him to open on this one. But even in Chippewa, we haven't, we haven't put up walls yet, and we've done a front page of, of that an exceptional number of times. And so, a project like this brings attention to your community. Um, and it will, not only as, as it gets going, and as people tour it, and as it opens, but on an ongoing basis, the more programming you do, the more attention you're going to get to the, not just to the center, but to downtown, to everything about Duran. Uh, it puts Duran in a great light. It's every, every part, every project I've worked on has put the community in a great light. A third is it takes time. Now, I, I, I do this for a living, and I was quite impressed, Dan's already got, Dan's already got a building. He doesn't have to build it. He's already got what we call FSA, Furniture Fixtures and Food. He's got toilets, he's got chairs, he's got, uh, and, and really, if you're gonna have a meeting with people, that's what you need, toilets and chairs. But he's got more than that. He's got furnishings for the space, and he's only been at it a few years. So, I, I was duly impressed when I took a tour of the building and how much he's already done. One thing that makes him very different from me is that he's an army of one. I mean, I've had fundraising committees, I've had, uh, boards, uh, and I'm, I'm quite impressed that Dan has done a lot of work that he's, that he's done. The fourth part is that you'll be glad that you supported this project. You'll be glad that you, you, you didn't flush this project in any way. Uh, even in tiny Downsville, I gave, I, I didn't do a whole lot to the Downsville Community Museum, except I had a couple meetings and gave them some advice and encouragement. But Downsville, of course, is a lot smaller than Duran, and when they opened up their community, Downsville Community Museum, uh, they immediately, uh, have one of the biggest events in all Downsville, every year. Uh, and they run that entirely with volunteers. Now, in a town like Downsville, can best that from an all-volunteer effort in a building that was rehabbed on Teller's building, um, then, and Downsville is, is not in the same position you are. You're gonna go much for your economic engine. Um, but, um, it can benefit you in exactly the same way. And so, I think what Dan needs is to put his $1,000 worth of building. And, uh, and these projects take time. This project has not taken nearly as much time as some of the projects that I've been, uh, involved in. Uh, I think it's, I think it's a winner for Duran, I think it's a winner for kids, adults, I think it's a winner for the city council. If you, if you put your support behind it, uh, you're gonna, three, four, or five years, you know you're gonna be here, you know? And, uh, and I think that's, I think that's a great, I mean, I think it's great for Duran, I think it's great for this conference. I, I'm open for any questions that you might have about, about, uh, what I've done, or what I'd be willing to help Dan with, or what, what you would want from him before, next year's, that, you know?
You've repeated this, the phrase a couple of times, "it takes time." When it came out of, of committee, to, you know, what are we talking here? Time, time.
Sure. Well, I think, uh, I think within two years, he'll be open to it. I think that's perfectly realistic.
I'm sorry, within what?
I think within two years, he can open his doors.
With how much money he'd be raised to do that?
Well, he's, he's got most of the stuff in there already, and most of the people he's working on are volunteering for him. Um, it's, it's amazing to me. I mean, I'm, I'm, I mean, he's a persuasive guy, obviously. But, um, yeah, I think, I think with, uh, with the tools, time, uh, passion that he's got, I think within a couple of years, he can have the doors open.
Do you think that's possible, Dan?
I honestly do. Like I said, my problem right now, you know, this, being a musician, this COVID, I, I've been out of work for two months here right now, it's slowed down. Still, in this COVID year, which started basically for me in March, I still spent, over-doubled the money that I would have had to do to make my agreement with you, because I, I know, I want to get this done. I don't want to sit here and not get it done. But my goodness gracious, you just had somebody apply for a loan here because of the COVID thing, you know? And I know it affects everybody, but if you take a look at the, the arts and music right now, there's some of the people that are being hit the worst with this. And as far as things going in, or I've had my building the last two years available for the windows for people to use it, as you see now, there's a, a activity scene and some other stuff through, some people into town wanted to put it in. But schools have had their hands full trying to do stuff, so there haven't been any school projects. But before, we had stuff from St. Mary's and stuff from junior high in there that the kids did in projects in the school. I've been trying to, to make it open so people can use it, to, to bring people downtown, to take a look at the windows and see what's going, and know what's happening in town. I mean, I, I've never been through a thing like this in, in all the years I've been doing music, like COVID-19, what it's done. So, to try to say how money's gonna be, I didn't expect it. If, if, I would have got further on the building if this didn't come up. And that's not like he's asking you for money.
So, the question is, of course, the, this, you have a drawing there at the front of the building, and I see that. The, the question as far as, um, probably the first thing you need to have before is a design inside, so, a layout. I mean, do you have architect plans? Do, I mean, is there anything along those lines that have been drawn up? Because obviously, you need that to determine how much the costs are, how much, you know, and those types of things.
Well, I roughly know how much it's gonna cost to do from what I, I've done before. Part of the building's done, okay? Part of it is. I've got people that are, are volunteering a lot of their efforts of time there. Know what I can't get done from that, it's gonna be hard to say. But I honestly think in two years that I can get this done. And, uh, I mean, I've never, it's not like I'm going to you for a loan. It's not like I'm going to the bank for all. You know, I, I, I don't want to try to take city money to, I'll never try to do this on my own. And considering the stuff they have done pretty darn good, and I wish that you'd give me the chance that at least of another year to prove to you that I can do it more, you know? It's just that it's $1,000 to be able to be stuck in the building, go a lot further than paying it as a fine. Not like the rats crawling out of the building. I, I heard you say at the, at the committee meeting that the, the reason that this, uh, ordinance was brought in there was because there's some buildings that were in pretty bad shape in town, you know? What's not exactly what's going on in my building is not having those kind of issues. And I, I, I don't know, I wish you could look beyond, uh, what those buildings are causing havoc and give me another year to work at this. I'd be willing to do the same thing of last year. I mean, if, if I, if I don't show you that I've made that kind of project, well, then, you don't charge me the $1,000 for the fine.
How many years has the store been closed?
Well, the store's been closed a lot, but this ordinance hasn't been around forever either.
What year? What year?
What year did the store close? It must be, what, 15 years ago, probably? But I didn't start on doing stuff inside that building until, oh, gosh, it must be six years ago, something like that. And I'll end up, like I say, five years ago, the, the music business took it down the slide like the son of a gun. But I did a lot of stuff in the beginning to get it to where it's at. But now that I've, I've, I've got my social security, it's basically, which was, in addition to my income for flying into band, gave me more money to work at this stuff. And I, like I say, I didn't figure this COVID thing was gonna come around or anything like that. I don't think anybody did. But that's really on top of the, the business being down, it didn't hurt that, but I...
Okay, um, any more questions from the council?
Maybe, maybe just one more comment. Uh, regarding, thank you for these, Dan, and clearly, you did do the work that we asked you last year.
I went beyond what I would have had to do, and I, I...
And I think that's a fact in there. Because one thing I think that, that, I'll just speak for myself, that does bother me a little bit from the standpoint of the timing of these receipts and all the work that was done is, so we were here about a year ago, we gave you six months to do this. We didn't get anything from you until, we had to hit you again this year. You come in, and none of this work was even begun until I sent that letter.
Yeah, the COVID also came in too, so the...
Pardon me?
And COVID came in.
Well, clearly, and again, I'm, I'm not gonna, again, I'm not gonna hammer on anyone too hard for their businesses on that, that's clearly been an issue. But you didn't start on any of this until essentially, we prompted you again. And I think it, it just feels like that's just going to continue. My opinion.
The gentleman that did the work on your building electrical, is he a licensed electrician of the state of Wisconsin?
I don't know. I mean, he's a friend that's doing the work, it's, you can...
We, it's a business front. It has to be, all electrical has to be done by an owner of the building or a licensed electrician. I'm nervous, being that I own a building on that...
No, I understand.
And when wiring, anything that's done to a building that is not up to code, you are a risk to everybody around you. And now you want to start opening up something with a nonprofit-type thing, which is fine. You're putting those people at risk if you put them in a building that has wiring...
Wiring is much better than what was in that building, you know?
I don't doubt that.
And it's up to code.
Up to code is by a professional licensed electrician. And if, if that building went down and it's not done by a licensed electrician, it doesn't matter what you, what you think it was up to. It has to be done by that standard, so... To me, all your electrical work is null and void, it's not done by an electrician, that's why.
Scott, I agree with, with what you said about, about the timeline and some of the work being done. And looking back, these receipts from Menards, all the, all the dates are cut off after when stuff was purchased, but if you go back to, to May of 2019, when some of the stuff was purchased on eBay, so it sat for basically a year before anything happened. And then, we sent the letter on September 1st, same response by September, by September 25th, never received, we got from Dan for his, his handyman, longer, September 26th, 3/10th, 10th, 8th, 17th, 11th. Nothing gets done till we flush, and that's not acceptable to me.
And the questions from, and the other council? Okay, um, so again, the recommendation from the committee was to deny the appeal. Would someone like to make a motion, put on the floor concerning this appeal?
What about the fact that he went and got some help from professionals? He hasn't done that before. That's a good old college effort, wouldn't you say?
I think we're beyond college efforts. I think we're beyond that.
I'm gonna make a motion that we deny the appeal.
Is there a second?
Second.
We have a motion, second to deny the appeal. Is there any more discussion?
Yeah, I'm, I'm, I, I lost a little bit in translation. That's, we were spoke previously. I, I really struggled to hear, and I, I apologize, I, I can't be there, and it's, I, I can't do much about it. Um, my biggest thing at the last meeting was a plan. Do we have that?
We, we do not.
And, and as much as it, it kind of pains me to say, to, to enforce a $1,000 fee, where the money could be put forth, if there's any kind of effort, I mean, he, he, people, I mean, I, I, I wanted to get a little bit of translation here. Um, it sounds like he's got people there that are, that, do we have a plan? Is it, is it, uh, I'm, I'm, I'm struggling a little bit on my end, it's because I'm not there. But it's, it, it is still hard for me to, to give somebody a $1,000 fee, if they're willing to put that $1,000 back into the business, knowing what's coming next year or with the changes that were proposing to the vacant building ordinance. It's, I, I just don't know if the money couldn't be spent better.
Terry, I'll, I'll ask, how many, how many years do we allow this, how do we allow us to continue them?
I understand that, and, and I think that the, the teeth of it are coming. Um, I, I know we've, we've been pushing, and we're starting to push harder. I'm just wondering if maybe we don't? And like I said, it's, it's a double-edged sword. I mean, for one, do for one, do for all. And that's, and that's, that's, that's my hangup as well. I'm, I, I, I understand that, and I know that I'm saying it. But use a $1,000 spent somewhere better than a $1,000 fine, or fee, sorry.
Okay, any other from the council? Any other comments or concerns? There is a motion on the floor.
Can I, can I say something first?
I'll give you 10 seconds.
Okay. What I'm getting at here is, I, I, when I get volunteer help, I have to work at their speed too, okay? There's been a lot of things happen this year, and I've, I've got in my mind what's going on, because part of it's done in there. Maybe the way to address this wouldn't be, give me till, till next month to come up with the visualization of what it's gonna look like and what's, what's done in there before you make your final decision on this. It was just impossible between the last meeting to get drawings and everything completely proven on as to what it's gonna be. This is something where I think these things could have been done prior to today, say, and give you more time. If you would have taken some initiative and done that stuff.
I, I agree, Mark.
Okay.
But, I'm just, like I said, I just, a $1,000 fee, or if we, if we can get, if, if it's the push that needs to be pushed, can we, can we, can we put a contingency on the, on the vote? if it's the push that needs to be pushed, can we, can we put a contingency on the vote?
My motion stands, I think.
Yeah, no, unless the person who made the motion would, if somebody wanted to amend, there would have to be permission from the person who offered, and you're not offering any. So it's a yes or no vote on this particular question? Okay, any other comments, questions, concerns?
So before you do this, a yes, a yes vote is to deny the appeal.
Yes, may I add something, please?
Actually, no.
What we were going to do is actually make you a business plan and draw you out plans architecturally with feet and-
Yeah, I understand.
You don't need an art center. Obviously, you don't need an art center.
Even if the bill is denied, it doesn't stop you from wanting a plan. We're still on the run or something like that.
It's for one year, I guess.
If you, yeah, well, because the motion was to deny, you made the motion to deny, so a yes vote means we're denying. Yes. Okay, call the question. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say no. Roll call, please.
Councilmember Gillis.
Yes.
Councilmember Harton.
No.
Councilmember Hooker.
Yes.
Councilmember Raisler.
Yes.
Councilmember Schneider.
Yes.
Councilmember Schofield.
Yes.
Five to one.
Five to one? Motion's agreed to. Okay, can we move on to the rest of the appeal?
So maybe there's two other appeals.
Thank you for your time.
On the summary page that I included, the first one is the Net Venture. That appeal was also denied by the committee on a three to one vote. I guess fair to say the, the only concern that was brought up by the committee regarding that one is, so Mr. Hayden's appeal was based on the fact that he's, he says he continues to use the building in support of another business, which is in our ordinance. But I guess clearly, we're looking to change the ordinance to make sure that it's a business in Duran. But I think the question still remains, is if Hayden wasn't able to basically present any any evidence otherwise, that it's actually, that his other business is actually even open at all. So, again, the fact that it's actually-
His other business anywhere, you mean?
No, well, his other business in Ellsworth, right?
That that's not-
Right, so I mean, to say that basically this vacant building here is in support of another business, he hasn't been able to support that. So, I mean, nobody's seen any, again, he's transferring penews or bikes from one to the other, so, again, it's hard, it's hard to claim of how you're fucking supportive of another business.
So we don't have proof, he doesn't, he hasn't shown us proof of owning the business?
No, the only thing he's, again, he has not, other means he has not returned any of my calls. It's just, hey, here's the letter and here's my appeal that says that, hey, right there, it's in support of another business. And I'm telling you, I have another business, but that's it.
Yeah, that's not really enough, I guess.
It doesn't seem to be, and I think that was the committee's point.
So that there's no, with no evidence of support of another business?
Correct.
Yep. Okay, so, any other ones?
And the other one is Mr. Hillard. And that appeal was granted. Mr. Hillard has been working on the properties at 518 and 510, First Avenue. 518 is completed, it's being sold, the work continues on the property at 510, so he seems to be working towards getting the buildings unvacant.
The one property just sold.
Okay, good.
And he was working on it today, the other one?
Yeah, so those were the only appeals. And just, I will add one piece. The Burger, Laundromat's property is still in middle limbo. They did not file an appeal. As I shared with the committee, I heard from Ms. Burger twice that they're still waiting on bids for potential asbestos abatement and other things, but I was not able to get a hold of her prior to today's meeting. So at this point, there's no appeal that was filed, so there's really no required, there was no required committee action. So there's really no council action either. She's, she's in violation of the ordinance.
The one thing I always said, if somebody really comes to us and there's something going on, as far as working with somebody or says, you know, I will work with anybody if it gets something else.
I think that's-
That's the thing, that everybody's saying, you know, we're just doing this to know, if you want to work with us, we'll be happy to work with anybody, to get a business operating in any vacant building in town, we'll get it out of it.
So you need a motion to deny the Net Venture?
Well-
That Net Venture, is that that across the street?
Because that's technically the only other one we have to deal with, right?
Well, again, the council still needs the full potentially of Hillard. If you're, if you're there.
The committee voted to approve his-
Approve his and deny the Net Venture. So I guess those are the two acts in the light of the law.
So we could make a motion to say that we reaffirm the cities, or the committees on those two.
For those two.
For those two. We could do them separately. If you want to do one, we can do. Or we can lump it into one.
Well. Last time, it wasn't, it wasn't a unanimous vote on the Net Venture.
Okay, so maybe we should- We should separate.
So I'll make a motion to be denied the Net Venture appeal?
Second.
We have a motion second to deny the appeal from Net Venture. Is there any discussion?
Just to clarify, because like I said, I struggle from home. I try to keep up, but that is the one whose business is in Ellsworth, and he has not got back to us on support of an actual business.
But he made that claim, Terry, in the appeal, but yeah, I don't know that anyone has seen him even here. And he has not provided any, frankly, any support that that business in Ellsworth is operational.
Has he responded at all other than the appeal letter?
He called the night of our meeting to say he wouldn't be there. Yeah, and that was it. And here's, again, my bill's based on this. That's all I had to say.
Okay, are there any other questions? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
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 Opposed, say no. Motion's agreed to. Someone would like to make a motion on the other one, which is the Hillard. And this one, this one here, the recommendation was that we accept the appeal.
I'll make a motion to accept the appeal on Hillard property.
Second.
We have a motion second to accept the appeal on Hillard property. Is there any questions, comments, concerns, any more discussion?
This is the guy who sold one and is working on the other, correct?
Yes, correct. Okay, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say no.
He's forty-one, so the Laundromat, he just gets in, he builds a thousand dollars.
Correct.
Okay, next move on, Police Department monthly report. Monthly report was another thing. Otherwise, Chief Ridgeway.
I just have a couple of quick things. Just want to thank our part-time staff. We had a couple of quarantine issues. And our part-time staff really stepped up and covered a lot of our shifts. Things are going well with that staff. They're filling a lot of our shifts for us, like I mentioned, quarantine and some vacations during the hunting season, things like that, so. They've done a great job. And then also, we had last Wednesday night into Thursday, we had somebody going around vandalizing some buildings, spray painting some stuff. There were three different incidents throughout the city, so just make sure you check the backs of your buildings, things like that. We've driven around quite a bit, haven't located any other ones, but if you know of anybody walking around or recognize anybody suspicious walking around late at night that Wednesday into Thursday morning, please let us know so we can investigate it further. We watched some different security cameras that are throughout the city, and we haven't located any suspects. So any help the public could provide would be great. Any questions, anything?
One quick question. With the school being on an interesting schedule, as far as the student, school resource officer, how are you working this time?
Yeah, he's still being paid by the school as a school resource officer. They have students, they have about fifty students, forty to fifty students at CADDY. They basically are allowing students to go there that don't have supervision at home. And they're being overseen by teachers doing the remote learning. So they have students at CADDY and at Duran, Villas and your high school, so he's still got some stuff going there. We've given him a couple of projects. The school was one of the victims in the vandalism, so he's investigating the vandalism cases that we had as well. So we're trying to keep him busy with some projects and some things going on at school. He's worked a few different mental health type cases, different cases through the school that he's working on as well.
Sounds good. Any other questions for the chief? Hearing none, we'll move on to the fire department. We have a written-
We got, is it not on the desks? I was just looking for mine.
I did not have, I never received anything.
He sent it, let me, if you don't mind moving the handles, I will, I will be-
Okay, so then we'll just go on to the ambulance report. Of course, our director was here last week. Our last meeting was able to, and first one of his is written report. Any questions on the written report from the ambulance director? I see we did have fighter and ambulance called out on what could have been a really bad scene. It was out of the town of Albany on Sunday with one car. There were a couple injuries, but it could have been a lot worse, the way I sort of understand, I've read the news reports on it. Any questions on the ambulance report? Okay, we'll come back with the fire report when, we'll go on to the engineers' report.
Coming in right now.
Oh. He's got a background.
The report here is very brief. I'll just have it ready. But just, I do want to talk about this piece on here. It's all in the same case. Whoop, thank you.
Thank you.
So yeah, pretty brief report actually. I just, I did want to touch base on the, I was, I don't think we had any city representatives or the, we have the markets. We didn't have any city representatives on the Zoom meeting with the county, with the county hall director last week. But it was indicated in the notes that Chief King has discussed the Santa Claus candy cane event with Heidi, and it seems like they got things, you're pretty gone, so. Unless anyone has any, you know, potential concerns with that, that will continue.
Don't you know they're moving around, it sounded like the state of Wisconsin, I think that it did. As long as everything's fine with the health department on that. We gotta have something, say something, everything we're dealing with, the other events that we can't have, I think that that's something that is workable and obviously, hopefully we'll pick everybody up right before Christmas. Any questions on the fire department report?
And I got a roll some process and gurus to the fire and the police department. I contacted both Chief King and Chief Ridgeway about a little thing for my kid. I do appreciate it. This stuff sucks. You know, like, you hate to do it, but it's, you know, he's only five, but man, he's missed a lot already because of this stuff, and for the guys to to make the effort to do what they're gonna do on the thirteenth for his birthday, I do appreciate it.
Absolutely. Okay, next one on Public Works, engineers' report, Russ.
Good evening, good to see everyone. Been a while.
Been a while.
Brought you some warm weather tonight and helping snowballing, so. Just a few items to cover real quick. Third Avenue, CBD projects, street utilities. We completed topographic data collection survey and base map a couple of months ago. So we've been working diligently on our design plans. We had field soil boring done in the field a month or so ago, and we just received that report from the geotech engineer for the soil boring, so a report. We completed some research of right away, particularly in the S curve area. And preparing some preliminary options for the S curve area. Council asked us to look for, and we'll be presenting those to the Public Works Committee meeting next week. Talk about what we have designed there. Dryer Street, we completed again on that project, field topographic data collection survey and base map a couple of months ago. We picked up a soil boring on that project. At the same time, we had soil boring people out of Third Avenue. That was an efficient way to get a boring there. And then the same thing on Laneville, street utilities. Completed the field topographic data collection survey with them, and we also picked up street soil boring when they did the third avenue soil boring for that area of the project. Four Hill Cemetery, two lot certified survey map, the mayor talked about that tonight. That two lot CSM is basically complete. Town and Duran last night approved the assessor's plan for the nine properties along Highway 10 that this two lot certified survey map is connected to. So now the city can go through their client commission, council approval, and that's C F certified survey map. Town and Duran and Pepin County will need to do the same, and then that can be recorded. And then we can write up a description of your your corporate, new corporate boundaries for the cemetery. So that work will be completed with a a recording of the CSM, and soon it'll happen in January, March, depending on how your meetings fall to approve that CSM. And that's all I have. If anyone has any questions regarding any of the ongoing projects.
Is it, through this, Russ, do we know what the the whole boundaries is in the cemetery?
Yes, yep. And-
We do now.
Yep. Well, you'll see the certified survey map that's complete, that'll, will come to you after client commission. Recommendation to the council. Neighbor property was very good to deal with, you know, in terms of moving the property line around to match what you had out there in the cemetery and his access, so it went real smooth.
So basically, just a summarizer, Russ. So basically, what we have left to do is take that CSM to the client commission, ultimately council. And then also the annexation of the property from
Correct.
from Town of Duran, and then we will be done.
And then the final step is to update the corporate boundary.
Correct. Yep, and once all that's done, we update your corporate boundary map.
So essentially, there's
Three steps.
Three steps left.
Yep.
All the heavy lifting is done.
Yeah, it's been a long, difficult project, you know, for our survey and us with all the complications and so forth, and makes a stand in the town and the residents there that assessors not what that originally anticipated, that some of them go with property lines moving now, so. There's a big benefit for those property owners to now have a legal property description.
Okay, any other questions for city engineer? Okay, next we have the monthly report. The question is, do we want to do three and four? How long is your report, Matt?
Five minutes or less. No, just a couple of minutes.
Just a few minutes, okay. We'll do, okay, then we'll go on. Okay, Superintendent Ellis, do the monthly report, then we can do the other two items.
Everything in all my departments is pretty status quo, except for the sewer, the sewer plant. We have started the RBC project. Today, the crane was in town. We pulled the old RBC out of the pit. It is sitting on the lawn and about half tore apart as we speak. The rest of this week, we'll finish tearing the old RBC apart. The rest of this week, we'll finish tearing the old RBC apart, uh, get it hauled out to the dump and hauled out to the, uh, scrapyard, and then we have to verify all the measurements for the, for the new shaft. Um, better off to pull the shaft out now, verify all the measurements, so when that new shaft comes, um, it just fits right in. So the new shaft actually comes, the shaft, the media, the bearings, everything, all comes assembled from the factory, so all we gotta do is pick it off a semi-trailer and put it right, and put it in the hole. Obviously, that is easier said than done, so it's just not gonna be done in five minutes, but, uh, the project has started. Uh, we verify all the measurements, we probably got about four, five weeks of, uh, I'll call it engineering, um, building design, some things like that, that we have to go through before they actually get it into production, you know, and then a couple, however long it takes in the line of production to get done. But they told me from day one, it'd be pretty close to 20 weeks, so, uh, I'll try to get you a report, you know, at least once a month, barring January, February, March, the reports are probably just gonna be it's in production, it's in production, it's in production, but it is gonna be about 20 weeks is what they're telling me before it actually gets here, so it's putting us into, into March. Which is better for us, actually. It's better for us that we actually don't have any snow and, and, uh, the ground is firm down there to, to actually install that anyway, so. Uh, other than that...
Go ahead.
Go ahead.
Yeah, was, was the other variable that's all this, was like the gearbox or something? What was the other variable?
Uh, the gearbox, yeah. The gearbox got tore out today, and will be taken back to, to Crane Engineering Shop, and then they'll dissect it, see if there's any issues with that, so I don't know, uh, quite yet where we're at with the gearbox.
Can I borrow?
Any other questions on the RBC issue? Otherwise, the Christmas decorations are up. Um, the annual road certification is done from the state, um, and I was at the county highway committee meeting, uh, yesterday where they approved, um, their portions of Third Avenue East and Laneville. And we will, we're hoping for a Public Works Committee, if the Public Works Committee is available next Wednesday at 5:00 PM, uh, to have a 30% plan set. We'll go over the options from the county on what we've, uh, come up with. We'll go through the S-curves options and all the available options for the 30% plan set of Third Avenue East.
Matt?
Go ahead. Yes?
Hey, just, uh, there was a vehicle today, and I didn't know if that had anything to do with anything for the city or if it was a state thing. It was a pickup truck with a, what I call like a sniffer, the big, kind of a hook hanging off the side of the pickup truck, driving down Prospect Street. Is that something we're involved in, or is that a state thing, or do we know what that was?
No, we, we Energies sends a sniffer truck through town, if not monthly, it's every other month, and, uh, that truck basically is leak detection for their gas mains, which, uh...
Oh, that's, that one, yeah.
Which I did find out, they do have a minor gas leak issue, uh, down by Bubba's Building, so they'll be doing some digging down there on, on, on Friday.
Okay.
Thanks for, thanks for reminding me, bring that up, I just found that out this afternoon.
Okay. Even remotely, he just got to, he has all his ass questions, right? Uh, okay, is there anything else on the report? Any other questions for the, uh, for Streets and Utilities?
You go, Terry.
Okay. Okay. Next we move on to, uh, item number three, discussion possible action regarding professional design and construction and engineering services for Dryer Street, uh, reconstruction project from Cedar Corporation of the amount of 52,000, and then, of course, another one is the Laneville part of this. Um, uh, we are still sort of treating this as, as two different jobs along, 'cause again, this isn't part of the grants.
Correct.
So it is, we, we're, we're sort of handling it a little bit different, and this amount is basically based on the percentage of the cost of the project.
Correct.
It's, it's the standard amount that's built in.
Yep. And a standard, similar scope of service that you're seeing for the design and the construction, the bulleted item. And, uh, Dryer Street, I did work with Matt for the last month or so, looked at some of our previous cost estimates, so it's based on our revised lower cost estimates with some of the items we had as, as some, some bid items as potentially needed, so it's been reused. So Dryer Street is now estimated at $346,000, construction and 10% contingency, 550 feet, lineal feet of street, plus there's a loop eight inch water main that's gonna go back and, and tie into the booster station line, and then there's also in this project, there's some work Matt has to do for the DNR on the overflow of the water reservoir, that's also in the Dryer Street project. And Laneville is the same thing, that's estimated now with construction and contingency, 1.55 million. Um, so that's what, yes, the engineering is, is based off of those constructions, that should be about. Laneville is 2,800 lineal feet, and Third Avenue since that, community, community development block ran, um, with federal funding and federal wage rates, uh, the, even all these projects that we approved, the other two are all together, it'd be nice to bid on all of them in one package as one large project, but with the CDPG, with the federal wage rates and all the reporting that the contractor has to do, depending on bidding Third Ave as one project, and then depending on what you do tonight, you know, Laneville and Dryer would be another project. We bid on that the same time, you know, same day, you know, an hour apart, so contractors could essentially be very competitive, go after everything, and then hopefully have the same contractor on all three projects, depending on what you approve, or something different if it's just Dryer.
So I, well, Russ and I have been working over the last month or so here too, Dryer Street, um, we dropped the cost of Dryer Street down by about $50,000, $60,000, and then we dropped, uh, Laneville estimates down about $100,000, right, Russ?
Yep. Right.
So those numbers are reflected in on these prices as well.
You were gonna do Dryer Street, Matt, make that loop that you, that you, water main loop you talked about?
Correct.
That's all gonna happen, okay.
Yep. That was all included in our topographic survey that you, you approved in the fall.
And it's all tweaked, Matt, just known as, that's, sure that's what we're gonna be talking about next week's Public Works meeting, finally, and all of that, but I guess I would just add that basically the numbers that Russ presented here are exactly the same numbers that were in basically the budget that you approved for this project as part of the 2021 budget, so, and no surprise that you're just, you know, actually approving the, the actual contract now associated with that.
And in Laneville, there's still some Pep and Colony share for their portion of the project too, that comes off of that construction and 10% contingency number.
Okay, uh, any more questions on this? And again, it seems like we would be on schedule to bid this in January or February?
Yeah, March, we're gonna be advertising end of February, beginning of March, and bids in March. Which, in our industry, that's a good time to get things out early in the year.
Yeah, it's usually early, yeah.
A lot of projects come out or people get busy.
Plus, do you, I mean, some of the major contractors that you're, I mean, uh, do they, do they, do you get the word out to them early, what's coming up?
Exactly. If you approve these other two projects tonight, definitely be contacting contractors to let them know that...
Yes.
You've got some big work coming out, so they know about it. Especially the contractors in O'Clara near it, they know you have this large project, then they might not chase us, you know, three, four hours away when they got people they can be working close to home. They'll be happy to hear that, so, yeah, that's typically what we'll be doing, we'll be contacting them, letting them know this project will be coming in March.
Any more questions?
I'll make a motion, we, uh, approve the design and construction proposal for Dryer Street for 52,000 and for Laneville for 220,000, Cedar Corporation.
Second? It's the second. Okay, we have a motion, second, it's on the floor, for any further discussion, comments or questions, that we would go in and approve the, uh, every one of the Cedar Corp for the two projects, Drive Street and Laneville.
So we're, we're approving 272,000 roughly?
Yes.
Correct.
Yes.
Just checking?
Yep. Your math is very good there, Councilmember.
Tom Lawson, good job.
You wanted to yell, you're so mad, I have, but I couldn't want to, yes.
Is there any more questions or comments, concerns? If not, roll call vote, please.
Councilmember Gillis.
Yes.
Councilmember Hartum.
Yes.
Councilmember Hooker.
Yes.
Councilmember Raesler.
Yes.
Councilmember Schneider.
Yes.
Councilmember Spolfield.
Yes.
All six in favor?
Okay.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
Before we move on, can, can, can we get a verbal agreement for 5 o'clock next Wednesday for the Public Works Committee?
I've already got it penciled in.
I work for Steve, Zell work for you and Terry.
Councilmember Hartum, did you hear that? Next Wednesday, 5?
As long as, uh, I should get paperwork to remind me, but as long as I'm, uh, COVID free, um, I'm in.
Okay.
Herb, you're good? Thank you.
All right. Anything else that's up to us? If not, let's pay the bills.
We'd miss it. We're all, man. We could have a phone, you know, to have a few of the time.
Can I get, can I get any off the call?
Yep.
Yep. She has it. Just hold on.
Hold on.
Um... Ross, you have? Yeah.
Where did we ever leave the, uh, iPad thing? Try to get rid of some of these pictures.
The, um, yeah, some of the photos come from pre-election process. Getting a little each of you by the end of next week, and talk about kind of the needs part, um, from the standpoint of what you think you should get and local area. Um, recall that I had, we had talked about this as part of the COVID funding, um, and I should have mentioned that earlier, uh, we didn't get that money.
Yep.
Uh, one of the provisions of that, though, was pretty clear, it wouldn't have been previously budgeted, obviously the site has been funded before, so, but I guess to answer your question, Matt, each of you will be hearing from me in the next week, talking about this, basically what we're looking for, and then, uh, I'd like to say that we've had all this, my life, my end game, we're having, period, but I appreciate your patience on all of you.
And as we mentioned, Public Works meeting next week, uh, on Wednesday at 5, here, and then, of course, um, we always go with a special meeting, uh, a little bit later in the month.
Yeah.
Um, and with especially Christmas in there, the meeting on the 30th instead of the 23rd, and it gets it closer to the end of the year, so we can take care of any other, uh, bills that may come in or things, it's just, uh, try to get as many, you know, you don't get everything done, but at least, we, whatever comes in, we can get that done with. I'm not expecting that to be a very long meeting, but again, we'll take care of the business at hand.
What do you?
Wednesday, the 30th. It's, it's just the fifth Wednesday instead of that.
I didn't know if that was a preliminary, uh, or a success. We had to have another meeting to do it?
Yeah, so if there's... But then you don't use it, and it's just a formal...
So we just need it in the...
Twenty-five, six, two... Yeah, you have a final. Yeah, I'll send you that, that's the... Yeah, it's kind of a clean project. Well, there's a, you know, that's why, um, these types of projects, you don't have any, uh, or the, uh, city, uh, and, 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 you know, you, you, that's, then you have to, uh, so, but there's a, uh, kind of, you know, so, you know, you...
Special assessments of just the sidewalk, or you didn't get the grant for it?
Yeah, there was, yeah, yeah.
So, or, 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 yeah, it's, yeah. Yeah. There's, yeah, he's, so, or, or, Dryer, yeah, it proves. Yeah. Yeah. George's school. Okay. Okay. We'll, 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 we'll,